Called order, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, deliberate to the justice of the law.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Ms. Witchy? Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move council person, witchy be excused.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince that council member witchy be excused. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we have a couple of proclamations this evening.
Okay, the first proclamation is for Juneteenth 2019, whereas we acknowledge the notice of freedom given to the slaves of the state of Texas on June 19th, 1865, and whereas we give honor and respect on this day to the suffering of our ancestors, and we acknowledge the evils of slavery and its aftermath, and whereas on this celebration, we think about the moment in 1888 when 300 black men from Virginia, North Carolina, and Kentucky were determined to escape the terrorism of the post-Civil War South as they boarded trains for the Washington Territory and settled in King County mining camps, and whereas the story of outspokenness of James Shepperson, an educated black man who settled in Roslin, Washington in 1888, inspired many other blacks to flee the South at great risk and pursue new opportunities in Washington State as miners, and whereas we acknowledge African-American freedom, contributions, and achievements within this community, past and present, and whereas during this Juneteenth event, we appreciate the African-American experience and celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities, and whereas we commit to working together towards equity for an expanding economic, educational, and career opportunities for those in our community. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2019, to be Juneteenth, 2019, in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this celebration, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed the 17th day of June, 2019, and this is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And it's our pleasure to present this to Dr. Linda Smith this evening.
Remembering James Barnett is gonna be our...
Oh, great, well, welcome. Thank you.
I wanted to thank everyone, to the Mayor of Renton and council members alike, to thank you for acknowledging us and allowing us to celebrate in your wonderful city. This, actually, 2019 is a very special year because it is a 400-year anniversary from the conception of America that started in 1619 in the city of Jamestown, Virginia. And it was a wonderful experiment with freedom. You know, in America, we talk about the land of the free, but unfortunately, it was also the home of the slave. But in between 1619 and 2019, there's a dash, and that was when, I want to say that dash in particular that addresses Juneteenth was when Abraham Lincoln made the Emancipation Proclamation, which abolished slavery in America and freed the slave and made America truly the land of the free for everyone and the home of the brave for everyone. So we want to thank you for allowing us to celebrate Juneteenth in your wonderful city, and we would ask all of you to come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, the next proclamation we have is for Drum Corps Day, whereas Seattle Cascades is the oldest and most honored drum and bugle corps in the Pacific Northwest and the only drum corps, international world-class corps in the state of Washington, and whereas the Seattle Cascades is entering its 53rd year of entertaining and thrilling audiences and competitions throughout the country, culminating in the DCI World Championships in Indianapolis, Indiana, and whereas the Seattle Cascades is hosting the Seattle Summer Music Games at Renton Memorial Stadium on July 6, 2019, featuring seven of the nation's finest drum corps, including Blue Devils from Concord, Connecticut, Blue Knights from Denver, Colorado, Genesis from Austin, Texas, Troopers from Casper, Wyoming, Colombians from Pasco, Washington, and the Battalion from Salt Lake City, Utah, and whereas the drum corps activity represents the finest in music pageantry, performing before thousands of appreciative bands throughout the United States and beyond, and whereas the drum corps activity provides opportunities for young men and women to develop leadership skills, express their creative powers, enhance life skills to become productive, outstanding members of society, learn what it means to achieve excellence and perform artistically at the highest level. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim July 6, 2019, to be Drum Corps Day in the City of Renton, and urge all citizens to recognize the contributions that the members and staffs of every drum corps have made in the representative communities, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed the 17th day of June, 2019, and this is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Person?
I move that proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And this evening, we have David Haning and Ed Petkavich? Did I pronounce that? Was I even close? I apologize. Here to receive this proclamation. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Law, and council members for the second year honoring us with this proclamation. I want to express to everybody here tonight what a wonderful, family-oriented event the Seattle Summer Music Games is, and it is called the Seattle Summer Music Games since it's, we've been doing this for so many years, even though we've adopted Renton as our home, and we hope to be here for many, many, many years. It's a wonderful day of activity for the entire family that includes an expanded marketplace with all the drum corps selling souvenirs, plus businesses and other organizations from the Renton area that will also be a part of that marketplace. We have a beer and wine garden across the street at Carpenter's Hall, which is a wonderful pre-event to the show, and there will be five of the area's best food trucks at the show, and of course, the show itself, starting at 6:00 PM, that, as you heard in the proclamation, includes seven of the West's greatest and finest musical pageantry organizations. We really hope that many of you will come, and if you have not seen one of these shows, this is your opportunity, and I strongly urge you to come. You will be absolutely amazed. I brought some press releases that I left here on the table. Please help yourself. It has information in it about where you can purchase tickets. So again, thank you very much. That's terrific. Thank you very much for being here, and we'll put that on all of our social media sites and promote it.
Great.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, City Council. I have two items this evening. First is, please join us for the Kennydale Reservoir Groundbreaking Ceremony on Wednesday, June 19th at 10:00 AM. The location's at 1404 North 30th Street, which is where the new Kennydale Fire Station, 15, was built. The Kennydale Reservoir is a collaborative project between the city and the RFA that will fulfill the need for a reservoir west of I-405. Completion of the project is anticipated by summer of 2020. The second item is that PSC is returning to town, and their tree trimming contractor, Asplund, will be doing annual maintenance work on the five electrical circuits that are located in Renton. This will involve pruning trees close to electrical lines for public safety, fire prevention, and safeguarding continuity of electrical service delivery. The following planning areas will be affected: Talbot, the Talbot area, Highlands area, and One Circuit, and the East Plateau area. All residents in proximity to work areas will be notified by PSC in advance of any work. Electrical power is not anticipated to be interrupted. Residents can check work areas by going to PSC's website at www.psc.com/treetrimming and click on crews in your area for more information. PSC is hoping to start this season's work in July in the President's Park neighborhood. That's all for this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Moving on to audience comments, we have several people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. We have a timer and a light in front of the city clerk. And so, first is Jason Collins.
So I've come here for three weeks in a row now, and I really haven't gotten any answers out yet. I wanted to know if you guys know what a issue roll is, right? Like, I've been held for three competency tests, right? And you've held me for, I missed court dates over in one place, and I've done them on record in order not to have them anymore, so I'm, out of curiosity, if I was to ask you guys to remember five words, could you? I mean, by the end of a couple of questions. But, look, it's not that hard to pass one, that's what I'm saying. But an issue roll, it was terminated in 1834, all right? And you know what one is or not?
No, just go ahead and finish.
Well, it's when you go through and you don't allow anybody a jury trial, and you handle everything with signing deals, right? The feds will not try you unless you're 98% chance of winning, all right? They do not buck up and screw up and make people put due time without a reason, all right? I would like to know how many of the people that sign guilty pleas are actually signing a plea bargain, and how many are actually being tried? Because I tried to try, bring something to trial, and I couldn't get it to go to trial. I was held in Akeem one day when I'm on my trial date, actually. So, maybe you can talk to Don Pearson, you know, I've been on your Facebook. But, all right, how about, I understand that homeless is an issue for you guys, right? And it's, the original issue is the smelly people with their backpacks and their bicycles and them being out all night? I get that, that's the original issue, but what's the ultimate issue? I don't think you're solving the ultimate issues, all right? You keep asking. I can, and if you would take time to maybe talk to me about this, I could get this pushed, and you could make huge changes in a state where you need certifications to handle food, even to give a plate to somebody, you need a certification, all right? There are ways around the jail system and the redundant crime that these people cause, all right? They are not given a chance to get out of this circle, right? So, you could do something about it if you take the time. I've looked into it for two years now, not by choice, all right? But I'm more than competent at hanging signs. I'm a sign guy, I'm way more than competent, and I can fix those problems too. That's what I do. I'm like autistic, all right? So, I just really need you to look up issue roll because you might end up with a civil class action lawsuit, and if you don't look into this, because I do not believe you guys are actually letting people go to trial, like, and I can prove it. So, and, look, I really think that you should be sending these same people and try it with a small group. Even if they're in jail, try to get them a food handler's permit so they can get a job in a restaurant when they get out of jail, all right? Like, it's not that hard. Instead, somebody said that you guys passed some law that says you can't sleep in a tent, right? Like, I mean, I really hope that indecent exposure from changing their clothes alone would not ever have that happen. I mean, did that really happen? All right. Somebody told me that on the street that they signed some kind of deal that said you couldn't sleep in a tent in public land or private land or something stupid? Is this true?
We don't know. I don't know.
You don't know what kind of laws you guys passed? All right, all right. And that was some bullshit.
Go ahead and finish your statement.
Because I just really, would really like to get, would you guys be willing to take counsel from somebody that's actually in this situation in order to solve this situation with the ultimate issues, or do you, would you not?
So if you would like us to put you in touch with Renton Technical College, we'd be happy to do that.
No, I mean, like, would you sit down and make up a plan to stop the homeless situation, or would you not?
Well, we're working on those plans.
Well, yeah, right, and are they college-educated people that are doing this? Are they people that are in this situation that are doing this? Are these people assuming, making an ass out of you and me?
Okay, well...
Are they assuming, or are they actually people that are in this situation?
You're running out of time, so do you want to...
I understand that, but do you see the benefit to working with somebody who is competent and capable? Or is it gonna be just college-educated kids that we just pay money and then pay more money on top of that to put them in the right schools so that they can shush whatever A they want?
Okay, your five minutes is up.
All right.
Linda Smith. Linda, did you sign up for, or is there another Linda Smith?
No, did I just sign? I'm sorry.
Well, you have to come up and speak.
I didn't think you'd say.
Okay. No problem. James Barnett, is that right?
I think we signed, I think, oh, the wrong one.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay, no problem. And then was that also Lila Anderson?
Lilia.
Lilia, okay.
I'm Lilia Anderson, I'm with Merrill Gardens, we're on 104 in Burnett, and the reason for me being here today is our sixth annual fundraiser is coming up for the Puget Sound Honor Flight on July the 13th, and based on the numbers, we're losing a lot of our World War II veterans, and I was hoping somehow we can, I'm just gonna read this, because then I get off track. Puget Sound Honor Flight is a nonprofit organization and a member of the National Honor Flight Network. They raise money to transport our veteran heroes to Washington, D.C., to visit and reflect at memorials built in their honor. This trip is free for the veteran and made possibly solely through individual donations and corporate support. No federal funds are allocated to this program. This event has helped to sponsor over 80 veterans, including five residents at Merrill Gardens, who made their dream a reality on the trip to Washington, D.C., their last mission. Time is running out, especially for World War II veterans. With the recent recognition of the 75th anniversary of the Normandy landing, this event is a wonderful opportunity for the few remaining veterans to reflect and revisit all they have given to their country and all of us. On Saturday, July the 13th, 2019, from 3:00 to 6:00, we're hosting our sixth annual fundraiser auction for this organization. We'll be serving buffet dinner with live entertainment and conducting a silent auction. We're asking you, your friends, and family to contribute an item for the silent auction or to make a donation. All proceeds go directly to Puget Sound Honor Flight. Thank you for your contribution you choose to make to this incredible organization. If you want to attend this event, you must RSVP to, and I have information for you. What I'm trying to accomplish is try to reach out and get the word out to all the World War II veterans who are still there and try to get them on the flight. We have two flights coming up, one in September and one in October. There is, the flight for September is booked up, but we still have plenty of space for World War II veterans for the October flight. Do you mind if I pass this out to you?
No, if you want to give it to the city clerk, she'll make sure everybody gets a copy.
I'm counting, you guys. And if there's any, my contact information is on the flyer. If there's any recommendation, comments, however, we can spread the word and to the veterans and also for donations, I would greatly appreciate it.
You betcha, we'll be happy to spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor?
Was there anybody else that wanted to address the council that maybe came in? Please come forward.
You may leave.
No, you're fine. You can give it to the city clerk.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Nancy Quinn, and I live in the City of Renton, and I'm here for two reasons tonight. The first one was an incident that took place in my neighborhood with a person who's been a known drug problem for seven years, maybe? So she's well-known to the police. I saw her in the street with one of those handy wipes, they're kind of like washcloths you get at the grocery store that you use for washing dishes, your grandma used them, and she's washing puddles. And this went on for 40 minutes. So I called the police, and I said, she's clearly on drugs, she's standing in the street and washing puddles. One of my neighbors reported she'd done the same thing the day before at Lowe's. So the officer I spoke to was very understanding, had an officer call me back, or was supposed to respond, was supposed to come to the neighborhood, but he called me back and said, you know, sorry, there's nothing we can do. I'm frustrated because if I were out drunk in my front yard in the street, she was intoxicated with drugs, clearly. I mean, you can see from the look of her that she is a drug addict. And he said, I'm sorry, the truth is, there's nothing illegal about being on drugs. That makes no sense to me. If that's factual, then I think we need to change the way we're looking at this issue. We've been fighting to try to get this woman out of our neighborhood for, like I said, seven, eight, nine years. So I just, I don't know where to turn to get more answers on this, but I have a very real concern. How do I explain to my children that this woman is allowed to be on drugs, standing in the middle of the street, in danger, and we can't do anything about it?
So I know you have another topic that you wanted to mention, but when you're finished with your second topic, if you'd please go back to, we have a commander in the back of the room, and if you give him the location, the date, and time, he can look up that case and get back with you on what took place.
Fantastic, thank you. The second issue is the speed on the Maple Valley Highway. And you guys know me, you know my name, because I've been barking about this for 10 years. So the nice little Band-Aid that we put in with the recommended speed limit worked great for the short time, but we're back to the same problem. I recommended to the Transportation Committee back then that we look at changing the name of that back to Maple Valley Road, Renton Maple Valley Road. Some of the signs are still there that say Renton Maple Valley Road. There's a psychological process, I think, when you hear the word highway, that you feel like you can travel at a higher speed. We have enough fatalities on that road every year that this has to be addressed. So I think the possibility of changing the name would really help. I don't know what kind of solutions we can come up with, but I think we gotta put our heads together on this one again.
Well, we'll check into that, and Greg, I don't want you to have to research that now, but I think that's a state highway all the way through to the freeway, isn't it? So the Washington State Department of Transportation has the authority over the naming of the street.
Okay, well, maybe we go to them.
We can put you in contact with the people to contact about that.
That'd be great, because they did it for the West Seattle Highway, changed it to West Seattle Bridge for exactly that reason.
Yeah.
So I think there's a precedence there.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Thanks for being here. Okay, Mr. Person, did you have anything else? You'd started to...
No, I was, I wanted to call attention because I saw her come in late trying to get a sign-up sheet.
All right, moving on to consent agenda, we have seven items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Seeing none, I move that consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
I have no unfinished business.
Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Pavoni?
Finance always has business, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Very true.
That's right.
Okay, the first Finance Committee report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable: total payment of $4,376,758.34 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding a number of vouchers and four wire transfers. Payroll: total payment of $1,447,825.37 for payroll vouchers, which includes 674 direct deposits and 17 checks for the May 1st through 15th, 2019 pay period. And municipal court: total payment of $4,956.26 for a number of vouchers, and those vouchers can be found on record in the city clerk's office. And this is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, who wasn't in attendance, that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
I'm here now.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next committee report is regarding a request to hire Transportation Systems Division Civil Engineer III at pay grade A, 29, step E. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in staff recommendation to authorize hiring a Transportation Systems Division Design Section Civil Engineer III at pay grade A, 29, step E. This position was approved as part of the 2019-2020 budget and is currently budgeted at pay grade A, 29, step C. Funds to cover the cost of this salary increase are available through salary savings in 2019 and also through specific capital projects, and this is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
This is the city's opportunity to hire a very skilled transportation civil engineer, and they're looking for comparable pay at their current position, so with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And the final Finance Committee report is regarding compensating a senior systems analyst at SEP D., grade A, 29. The Finance Committee recommends that city council authorizes the administration to compensate cadence for this position of a senior systems analyst at SEP D. of grade A, 29, effective June 17th, 2019, and this is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. McIrvin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to legislation, we have one ordinance tonight.
Okay, this ordinance is for second and final reading. This is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending sections 243, 244, and 246 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending Civil Service Commission regulations and providing perseverance and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
Can I move adoption of the ordinance? Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Megan, moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess I need to announce that they canceled the June 24th council meeting. There was actually no business to be conducted, so we didn't figure it was worthwhile to bring all the staff in, so we've canceled that meeting. And July 1st meeting, the committee of the whole will meet in the conferencing center talking about the 200 mil project and a drug info show and tell and emerging issues. And Mr. Mayor, this evening, in the committee of the whole, we had actually three really good presentations from the police department, and they were very interesting. One of the last one was on graffiti, and it really showed how important it is to get graffiti cleaned up really quick, and the person that's running that program is only working for 15 hours a week. I would move that the issue of increasing her hours, that positions hours, be referred to the Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, that the hours worked by graffiti coordinator be reviewed and presented to the Finance Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. You ought to be a little more specific of what you want, because we certainly would come to the council if we're requesting more hours.
Well...
We could give you a briefing on if there's a need.
Yeah, I think, you know, I realize... Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I realize it's a part-time position, but fifteen hours, and, you know, maybe we could start by increasing it to thirty hours a, a week. That would be my, my suggestion, but there may be other ways.
Do you want to make that suggestion to the chief, or do we let, want the chief to know that would, that there'd be support for it if they needed it?
Well, I, I don't think the chief would be against getting, increasing that position.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, with the only caveat I might suggest is that we'd want to know what the employee herself might be able, able to do if, right?
Right.
That would be the one consideration.
That's why I wanted it researched.
Well, so it's a little bit.
I could change that to referring it to the administration to come back with a report.
Okay, can we amend that? Okay, she's taking care of that.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be great. So we'll, we'll, we'll do some research and then just get back to you. Okay, let's see, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, on Monday, July first, two thousand nineteen, the Planning and Development Committee will meet at three P.M. in the council conference room. We have three items on the agenda. Title four, docket number fourteen, Park Avenue Design, and Emerging Issues and CED. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corman.
And no new business to announce, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce the Finance Committee will be meeting July first at four P.M. in the council conference room. We have six items. The first is Willcrest Town Home Fee Waiver Request. Second is allocation of LTAC funding, two thousand nineteen, second round. Third is Signal Electronic System Technical Two at step E. The fourth is Civil Engineer III and Utilities Hire at step E. Number five is vouchers, and six is emerging issues and finance. And also, I'd like to, I'd like to bring up this morning's event we had outside for the flag raising. I think it was the, the raising of the pride flag this morning was a fantastic step in, in the city's inclusion policy and where the city's trying to head and, and trying to reach out to the entire community and all the residents. And I just want to really applaud the administration for taking that initiative, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And it was a, it was a nice showing, and it was good to have council members there, and we had a good group of people, so thank you for being there. Okay, thanks. Ms. Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to announce that the Transportation Committee has been canceled. But for Chair Wichi, I'd like to announce that the Community Services Committee will meet at five P.M. on Monday, July first, in the council conference room. There are three items on the agenda. First is twenty nineteen Neighborhood Grants.